Please call the roll.
Certainly, Board Chair Hepner.
Here.
Vice Chair O'Laughlin.
Here.
Treasurer Lehman.
Here.
Clerk Pelletier.
Here.
Director Pearson.
Here.
Director Potatchek.
Here.
Director Stivland.
Here.
You have four of them.
Thank you. Would you please stand for a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our district mission statement, Director Pearson.
Thank you. The mission of Stillwater Area Public Schools in partnership with students, family, and community is to develop curious individuals who are active and engaged leaders in an ever-changing world by challenging all students as they travel along their personalized learning pathways.
Thank you. And our school board goals, Director Potatchek.
Goals 2016, 2017. As board members, we are morally and legally responsible for an equitable and quality education for each and every student in our district. As board members, we ensure decisions are made in the interest of all students, E21, and for future generations impacted by our actions. Partner with administration to assure all students are provided equitable opportunities to reach their maximum potential. Participate in efforts that support student and community engagement. Direct district efforts to develop a balanced budget for 2017 and 18. And finally, exercise effective self-governance.
Thank you. Could I get a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
Some moved.
Where'd that come from? Shelley moved.
All seconded.
Sarah seconded.
Excuse me, Chair Hepner.
Yes.
I just wanted to let the board know I will be—my daughter has her first orchestra concert tonight at 7:30 at the high school, so I will be leaving a little after 7 o'clock to attend that.
Alrighty. All in favor of approving the agenda as is, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. Superintendent's report.
Alright, thank you. For 98 years, Americans have remembered those who served our country in uniform on November 11th. The Department of Veteran Affairs is broadening the tradition of observance and appreciation to include our veteran and military families for the entire month of November. Some of our students have participated in activities to make special cards for service groups, and they are also going to be participating in assemblies to honor our local veterans. Today is also Community Education Day, as proclaimed by Governor Mark Dayton, and the community education team in Stillwater does just an outstanding job of providing programs that promote the health and well-being of our entire community, from our oldest to our youngest learners. After-school programs for youth are only a few of the things that community education provides, and these programs are really important for providing for the whole child. Community education would also like to thank all of our district staff for their support because the partnership that they provide really helps keep our students safe and supported in after-school hours. So happy Community Education Day to all of our staff. We'd also thank all who participated in the most recent community conversation focused on mental health. We had 40 people in attendance Monday evening, and everyone was engaged in the conversation about how we can best support our students and family in the Stillwater community. Much of the meeting was focused on developing priorities for working and moving the work forward together. We split into four groups and began to consider ideas and narrowed down a list of priorities for us to work on. Teams created a summary of the ideas generated and started working on the beginning stages and prioritizing this work. At our next meeting, which will be held on January 16th, we'll continue to work in small groups and dig deeper into planning and action. To that end, whether you attended our November 6 meeting or not, we invite you to sign up and help us with one of the four work groups. There's an online form that you can find if you're interested in that. And we'd like to thank those people who showed up. We had more than 200 people express interest in the topic, and we've had 40 to 50 people consistently come to work with us over the past of the last six months at our meetings. It really is a community effort. We're very pleased to be working with our partner organizations and Washington County, and we're blessed to have people as passionate as us working on this important topic together. We hope to see all of you at our next meeting on Tuesday, January 16th at 6:00 p.m., and it's held at Oakland Golf Course. Today, we also hosted the senior engineering team from Epson, Japan. We toured Brookfield Elementary and discussed the current state of classroom video technology. The visitors were really interested to learn about our challenges that we've had with our new buildings and the opportunity to tell them where we'd like to see things developed in the future for our students and teachers. We had a really robust exchange of ideas, lots of exciting things that they're planning for education. And I'd like to thank our tech team, and then specifically John Perry and Bill Byland for their time and energy organizing all this and working with the folks who came. Also, as you know, the AMSD School District superintendents have been working since last fall to develop a collective educational plan to create lasting equity and excellence in education for all of our students in Stillwater. Over 3,000 students participated with parents, educators, business community leaders in a World Cafe. There were over 12 events metrowide, and we also had students attend a conference with other students from throughout the metropolitan area. Educators and board members will gather again on December 8th to share what's been learned from these conversations, and then we'll have a conversation about how to bring this information back to Stillwater and look at different perspectives. And then finally, we've been partnering with Decoding Dyslexia Parent Group, and they are going to be meeting January—uh, January 14th, sorry—November 14th, from 7:00 to 8:30 at Central Services, and they invite people to come and meet with them and learn what they're doing. And the contact for that is Dr. Tamara Tinkum.
Thank you. Next item is the student report.
Yeah, I'll start tonight.
Okay.
My name is Abby Okonovich, and I'm one of the student body presidents at the high school. As of November 2nd, 1/4 of the school year has been completed. With understanding of the chaos and change that can take place during the start of a new school year, Student Council reached out to the student body and asked if they would take the time to complete a survey. The survey gathered 310 responses total. Thirty-two percent of the responses were from seniors, 36% from juniors, 20% from sophomores, and only 11% from freshmen. A big part of the survey prompted questions concerning flex time. Annabelle spoke about flex time during the last meeting. She mentioned the growing appreciation among the student body toward the 45 minutes of free time provided to students twice a week. This was proved through our survey. Most importantly, we wanted to know if students benefit from flex time. 258 of the 310 responses either agreed or strongly agreed with the statement, "I feel as though flex time has been beneficial for me." This was great to hear, especially because it can be easier to pay attention to complaints rather than encouragement sometimes. Getting more specific, we asked students how they use flex time. 233 students said that they take advantage of the time for academic purposes. I know that personally, I am a huge fan of the media center during flex time because it's a space where I can get a lot of work done, whether it's homework, college applications, or preparing for school board meetings. Aside from that, 150 students replied with spending time with friends, and 42 students used flex time to meet with a club or group. Other popular choices were the gym facilities and attending interest-based groups like trivia or NITD. Knowing that there is always something to improve, we asked students what their biggest concerns regarding flex time are. Many responses complained about adult advocate days, flex days during which the time is dedicated to going to the classroom of a designated adult advocate. This system was created as a way to provide a student with the guidance from a particular teacher, but the responses have been fairly negative, and many students fail to see the purpose of it. However, adult advocate is something that was worth establishing as a way to ease into the new change of having free time during the day. The adult advocate policy is likely to change in the future, but as of right now, it is an effective resource for managing the abundance of Stillwater students. Another complaint was about Edupass, which is a cellular application that is used to track attendance. Edupass can be a very effective tool to keep track of where everyone is spending their time. For example, it is estimated that 373 tests have been taken or retaken during flex time so far this year. The problem is that with so many students trying to check into their classroom, the app seems to frequently crash. This problem has been getting better, however, as students have been checking into their classrooms earlier in the day. During flex time today, it seemed to work more efficiently than it ever had before. Thinking more positively, we asked students about the best part of flex time. The majority of them responded by saying that they had time to take a break, talk with teachers, collaborate with classmates, and multiple people mentioned freedom. All in all, flex time has been gaining popularity and admiration amongst the student body. In a section of the survey that asked for additional comments and concerns, some students even wanted to have flex time every day of the week. Other concerns mentioned in the quarter-one survey referred to the school having a later start time, keeping PLC Wednesdays, having more passing time in the hallway, parking pass expenses, and the parking lot in general. These are issues and concerns that are at the forefront of students' minds and are worth considering for the near future. I'm sure that there will be many changes to report throughout the remainder of the school year, and I look forward to doing so. Thank you.
Thanks for doing that survey. That's good for us to hear that.
Yeah.
Good evening. My name is Annabelle Gragg, and I, along with Ava, will be representing the student voice. I'd first like to thank our student section that we have tonight. It's great to see students learning about decisions that are being made about their education. So I promised at the last meeting that I would share an update about the microwave situation. The petition requesting a microwave in the cafeteria was brought to Student Council and then presented to admin. They acted quickly and provided the school with two brand-new red microwaves. This was exciting news for Student Council, and this was our first petition of the year, and it was successful. Even better, the students who signed the petition have gladly agreed to clean the microwaves when needed. It will be up to the student body to respect their newly awarded microwave privileges, and we are excited to see how that goes. The last few weeks at Stillwater have been full of exciting things. We watched our boys' soccer team play for the state title, cheered our girls' volleyball team on All the Way to State, the state tournament where they lost today against Lakeville North, and will play again tomorrow for consolation. Both our girls' and boys' cross-country teams went to State. They placed second, and the girls placed 13th. Our choir performed a wonderful concert at St. Andrews, and it has been a very thrilling month and season to be a pony. Amnesty International is hosting a winter clothing drive this week for new and gently-worn winter clothing. All donations will go to Valley Outreach. It's awesome to see our clubs working to better not only the international community, but our own local community as well. National Honor Society is preparing for their Fall Food Drive, which will be held during the three-day week before Thanksgiving break. Historically, their drive has been a major success. It will be exciting to see how much can be collected with our freshmen in the school as well. All donations will be dropped off at Valley Outreach. The upcoming week will provide a full five-day week, which S.A.H.S. hasn't seen since the second week in October. It has been very fun to partake in all of the impressive accomplishments of our fellow classmates. As fall seasons wrap up, our winter athletes will begin tryouts and start their season shortly. The Student Council overnight retreat took place last weekend, and it was a huge success. We went to Mission Manor in Minneapolis, which is an escape room facility. Members learned new skills and exercised old ones while they collaborated in groups to get out of these escape rooms. After our time in Minneapolis, we headed back to Stillwater Area High School, where we partook in team bonding, learned about our Myers-Briggs in order to form better action groups, and we then planned events for the remainder of the school year. This is my third year on Student Council at Stillwater. With this in mind, I feel this group of students holds a great deal of potential that I have yet to see in previous years. They are dedicated to the representation of their peers, comfortable with asking tough questions, innovative, and genuinely aware and caring individuals. I cannot wait to see what this task force accomplishes, accomplishes, and fights for in my final year on Student Council. That's all I have for now. You can find more information on www.goponies.org and on the Stillwater Area High School Student Council Twitter page at sahsstudcode.com. Not .com. That's not how handles work. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is the district recognition. I'll turn it over to the superintendent for that.
Yes, we have two groups of folks that we'd like to recognize this evening, and first is Sarah Damon. Is Sarah here this evening? No. I will read what we have for Sarah. Sarah is the Stillwater Area High School Social Studies teacher, and she's been given the first-ever Distinguished Educator Award by the Minnesota Geographic Information System and Education Community. This is nowhere given by her peers. The Distinguished Educator Award recognizes active educators, K-12 or higher education, who have demonstrated leadership, creativity, and enthusiasm for the effective use of geography. Damon was honored for making significant contributions to GIS education in both creating engaging curriculum for students and for training educators. Sarah teaches AP Human Geography and Global Studies and has taken educational trips to the African countries of Ghana, Namibia, and Kenya. She also spearheaded the H2O for Life Water for South Sudan Service Learning Project at Stillwater Junior High, which raised more than $80,000 to build wells in South Sudan. So we'd like to congratulate Sarah for her work. This evening, we'd also like to recognize Rachel Style, Lori Hansen, and our journalism students. If they would come forward. I see you in the audience. Come on up. Stillwater Area High School students won 25 awards at the Minnesota High School Press Association State Convention. That is amazing. The Pony Express newspaper and Cabocconian yearbook took home six overall awards, including four Best of Show. Students also earned 19 individual awards for their work, including three first-place winners. The Pony Express broadcast was awarded second place overall. The Cabocconian and Pony Express newspaper earned fifth place, and the Pony Express website won sixth. More than 30 of our students from Stillwater High School attended the award ceremonies at the University of Minnesota, and we'd like to thank Rachel and Lori for their work with our students. Thanks for being here this evening.
Hi, I'm Lori Hansen. I teach English 12 with journalism, and I do the yearbook at the high school. I've been doing it a while. I gotta think for a minute. I was hired in the fall of '89. My first yearbook was 1990. That makes—I just finished the 28th book then, so this will be '29. I wanted to also mention that both Rachel and I are part of two larger national organizations. The Journalism Educators—Journalism Education Association is a national group for advisors and kind of supports curricular things. The National Scholastic Press Association is based right here in Minnesota, and they are also the group that sponsors that Minnesota convention where we just won a lot of awards. Together, those two groups put on two national conventions annually, which draws about 5,000 journalism kids from all over, from all kinds of programs. This fall's convention's in Dallas next week, and Rachel and I are both attending, but without students, right? So that's the first time that's happened. Usually, we want to take students because then we can compete in the Best of Show. So—but this year's special because we're both getting awarded at a luncheon. Rachel's gonna get her Certified Journalism Educator Award. Which I've been kind of egging her to get for a while here. And then I finally went ahead and did my Master Journalism Educator, so. So in doing that, we both had to take two-hour tests, and I had to do a project, and I wrote a 10-page article about anniversary yearbooks. Go figure. Because I just did the 100-year a couple of years ago. And then I have to—I do a presentation. So we both sometimes present there, but we're gonna go to the luncheon and just enjoy ourselves. And I'm also the member—board member of the NSPA Board of Directors, and so I do a lot of work for national programming for journalism events. And I also do—I'm on their Board of Judges, which basically means I read yearbooks all summer from other schools, and I critique them and give them feedback, and I give them honor ratings for second or All-American. We've been winning a lot of awards, and I'm not gonna stand up here and start trying to list them all, but I am really proud that since 2001, we have been consistently published in a Jostens Look Book, and it's a big kind of coffee table catalog of books all over the country. And we usually get put in that every year since—we have been putting—getting a page in every year since 2001, so that's a good run there. And last year—the book's like a year behind, so this—the 2017 yearbook hasn't been judged yet, but the anniversary book from the 100-year was one of 32 books that were featured in the book for the best in the country. So we're really proud of that. So, thanks for having us.
Thank you for having us as well. So I'm Rachel Style. So if Lori's been teaching '29, I've been teaching '19. I've been doing the Pony Express the entire time I've been at Stillwater High School. Pony Express actually runs three separate programs. We have our print publication, which the kids have copies for all of you. We do our online, which publishes about 80-plus articles, photos, graphics, videos, podcasts, and TV every single month. And then we have our Pony Express TV, which this year has been piloted into our school-wide announcements, and now our students from the Pony Express are doing the PA announcements every week. So we have a lot going on. The Pony Express is the largest high school newspaper staff in the state of Minnesota, and I think we've probably held that ranking for at least 10 years. Currently, we have about 78 kids on staff, which is a little bit lower. Last year, we were 120. So this year, we're very manageable, a little bit more sane. Behind me, we have six of our editors-in-chief. We have eight who couldn't join us tonight, but I'm gonna let them introduce themselves, and they each have a little bit they'd like to share about our program.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Abby Banks. I'm a junior. This is my second year on the paper. I am a print editor-in-chief. I'd just like to take a second to thank you for honoring us. We're very excited about our awards. We are going to a convention in San Francisco later in the spring, and we hope to win more there. I have a couple of copies of the first issue of our newspaper for this year, which came out on October 27th, so I'll just put those up front if you'd like to see them. And again, I'd just like to say thank you.
Hi, my name is Mira. I'm a print editor-in-chief, and like Abby, I'm a second-year student in newspaper. I'm a senior, and I do the front cover. We have, as Ms. Style mentioned, about 80 kids on staff. Those kids are all in a—in two different writing departments, which include news and activities, arts and entertainment, sports, so many other things. And all those kids have a staff job as well, which my fellow editors will explain all of those further later on. But there is so much that the kids are doing, and we're so proud of them, and they're doing a great job this year.
Hi, I'm Linaya. I'm also an EIC, and I am a senior, second year with the newspaper and third year with Mrs. Style. I'm one of the print editors-in-chief, along with Abby and Mira and Hannah and Ellie, who couldn't be here. So after school, once a month for about five days, our print editors come in and we lay out our pages. So we get our graphics together, we get all the text on the pages, and we do photo captions and put photos in. So everything that you see on the paper is what our print editors do after school. We are there every month to put out the paper, and we are very proud of them because this is our first year doing a tabloid, and they've worked so well with the little amount of space that we have, and we're very proud of them. So, thank you.
Sorry. I'm Haley Willius, and I'm an online EIC, and this is my second year in newspaper and my third year with Ms. Style. And I also help to run our business editors and our announcements editors. So Ms. Style touched on our announcements editors, and so every Wednesday, instead of one of our assistant principals doing the announcements, we have one of the kids from newspaper, and they're doing a great job of collecting everything that's going on within our community and making sure the students get their information. We also—to be able to run such a large publication, need a lot of money, and so our business editors go out and sell ads. So our paper, to be able to be printed, is around $550 per month—not per month, but per issue. And so we do six issues, so that's $3,300 just for printing. We also have to run our websites, snow, and a lot of other expenses, so they do a great job of managing that.
Hi, I'm Emma Loey. I'm a senior, and I'm an online editor-in-chief, and this is my second year on the paper with Ms. Style. I just wanted to talk to you about how this year we've opened up our club, our class slash club, to sophomores and freshmen, because traditionally, newspaper is a co-curricular class for juniors and seniors that they want to take it. That's kind of how it's always been because it doubles as an English credit and an elective. But we've opened up a weekly flex time option on Tuesdays, where we invite sophomores and freshmen—it's mostly sophomores—but sophomores and freshmen to come in and kind of learn about newspaper and everything that we're doing with it. I'm not in charge of it on EIC. Hannah Boardman is heading that up, but she can be here tonight. But we're really proud of them. The kids—we have a lot of interested kids in newspaper, and we're hoping that they're gonna join the class when they're juniors. They're writing—practicing writing stories. You know, they're learning about journalism, they're learning about how to write stories, and they're doing a really awesome job, and they're—we're proud of them. We're just kind of proud of them, so—I guess. So it's good that we're gonna have a new era of student journalists. Thank you.
This is like the most official thing I've ever done. My name's Hunter Hippel. I'm an online EIC for the paper. I'm in charge of the homepage, so if you log on to our website, everything that's up on there, I will help run. And then I'm also in charge of our social media accounts on Twitter, helping cover games. I think—I don't know what I want to say. I think one of the things we've been working on this year is if you go onto our website and you start reading articles, something that we wanted to change was how they looked when you opened up an article and started reading them. And this year, we found some really cool interactive things that we could put in. So for example, we did a story on Ms. Paula O'Lofthan, and what we put in there is based on the information that the writer—that story gathered about her. We made a timeline over her career. And that's just one of the things that we've been really trying to work on this year, is become more interactive and make things more visually appeasing. And then, social media-wise, today, we had people at the state volleyball game covering that and putting in the score and keeping people updated who are following on Twitter, since Twitter's become such a big part of our lives. So, yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Yeah, do you—do you want to go ahead? Do you have a question?
I do. I have one. First of all, you're all absolutely fabulous. You're the future, and I—I love the presentation, so thank you so much. And I'm wondering, what kind of time commitment do you kids put into this? It seems like it's a lot.
I can talk a little bit on that. It varies with your staff position because since it is offered as an English credit, we want to allow people to have a more broad scale of what they can put in. So people who are more involved, like EICs, layout editors, and online editors, it ranges probably from about eight to 12 hours a month, which EIC has put in probably the most effort, and we spend a lot of time—I wouldn't be able to probably count just various hours. Fifty to 30 hours a month, I guess. But—and then we also have our reporter positions, which can spend as little as maybe 30 minutes to an hour outside of school a month.
Thank you. Question?
Yeah.
What's the best way to get a hold of your paper?
You can reach out to us on Twitter. You could email any of our staff members, EICs especially.
So I just—I'm curious to know if you've ever considered having like a delivery service of some kind?
We do have a delivery service.
So how do I do that? It's being delivered to us?
I think copies are sent to board members at TSB every month.
Yeah, we do get—we get them in our folders. Get them in our folders.
In your folder.
Well, I guess I was speaking for the community too. You know, like if people really want to find out more about it, like, you know.
We have 10 students who are distribution reporters, so these are kids who are taking it as an English credit but don't want an after-school component. They deliver within our school. We have newspaper stands set out. We have over 50 teachers have them delivered to their classrooms. And every student has had to do a community outreach and develop a relationship with the community business and drop off five issues every single month, and then they can request more. So those are our physical partnerships. And then, of course, the online presence we've been trying to build over the last few years.
That's awesome. Thank you so much.
I—I saw one of the stands at the Pony Activity Center, which is a great place to have it because I've been seeing a lot of community members using that. And I just wanted to say—I happened to be at the high school yesterday. I think Abby, did you make the announcement—you did the announcement yesterday?
It's a different Abby.
Oh, different Abby. I was there for that, and I learned a lot. So I think it's a great idea that you guys are doing that.
I just wanted to comment that it really is remarkable. The work that Rachel and Lori have done with their students and the product that you are producing is really remarkable, whether you look at the web or the Cabocconian—I always want to say that incorrectly. I apologize. But it really—when you look at the level of work that you and your students produce, it really is remarkable. So thank you.
I would like to also say to Lori and Rachel, I think 29 years or 19 years—to be in an activity is fantastic. I know we have a lot of folks that get in activities, they're in them for a few years, and then they bail. So I think it's remarkable. So I think it's remarkable that you've lasted that long. When we were all much younger, in one of your first years, my daughter was your editor, and I know she's a lot older, and I'm a lot older now, so you're putting up with her for a year was fantastic. I thought that would probably drive you out of the business. But thanks for your years of work on those things. And like Superintendent said, it's, the product is fantastic every year. We're very proud to take that to our other meetings and show folks there, too. So thanks to the students, but thanks to you guys as well.
Thanks, Jen.
Open forum is the next item. We have a couple speakers tonight, and I would like to read our prologue as we typically do. Stillwater Area School District welcomes input from citizens as community involvement fosters better decision-making and improved learning experiences for all students. While comments and questions are welcome during open forum, law prohibits the board from discussing concerns about individual employees or students in a public meeting. We will stop the proceedings immediately if employee or student privacy issues are raised and direct the speaker to forward comments regarding individual employees or students to the superintendent. Because we are modeling civil discourse for our community, speakers must present their testimony in a respectful manner. Bulgarity, character attacks, malice, or specific complaints identifying staff or students by name or implication will not be permitted. Board will not deliberate, discuss, or engage in conversation with speakers during open forum. However, the board may ask administration to review the concerns presented. And with that, I should remind speakers, also please give your address when you speak. First speaker is Karen Lateral.
Good evening, everyone. Board Chair Hapner, Superintendent Pontrelli, and members of the board. My name is Karen Lateral, and I live at 2108 Cottage Grove Drive in Woodbury. I've been a teacher in the district since 1998. I'm pleased to say I know Rachel and Lori. I've known them for 20 years. And I'm currently working as a curriculum specialist in the area of literacy at the district level. And I've had the opportunity to speak with you on several occasions about our state of literacy for the district. So tonight, I'm here for two reasons. First, I'd like to thank our district leadership for their responsiveness and support of our elementary literacy initiatives. They continue to be open to discussions about the importance of literacy to a child's education, and about how we can best structure and support our elementary schools to accelerate our students' literacy development. Meaningful and systemic changes are on the way, and it's happening because of our district literacy, or our district leadership, and their support. The second reason I'm here to speak tonight is to talk to you about the two calendar options that you'll be presented with shortly. I am here to offer support for calendar option B. Strange that, as it may seem, this calendar option does relate to the ideas of literacy and the systemic change that we are looking for. So you might ask, then, what does a calendar have to do with literacy? So under our current calendar, Ready, Set, Go time is available only to our kindergarten students and their families. However, our draft calendar B would extend the Ready, Set, Go time through grade five, and that would provide two days at the start of the school year for children and parents to meet individually with their classroom teachers before the hustle and bustle of the school year. Extending Ready, Set, Go through grade five would provide our children and families the opportunities to get to know their teachers in individual conferences before the school year begins. It would also allow teachers to get to know their students and their students' reading strengths and needs through individual reading conferences. Currently, our elementary students get only a brief moment with their teachers before the school begins during their open house time. And the reading conferences that are essential to individualized instruction are completed during the school day, taking up time that could be dedicated to building community in the classroom, establishing routines, and beginning individualized literacy instruction. So by extending Ready, Set, Go through grade five, we'll see many benefits. Children will get to know their teacher and their classroom space before the start of the school year, reducing stress and anxiety for the first day of school. Parents will have a chance to get to know their teacher and share their children's strengths and needs, setting all parties up for success. Parents will have the opportunities before or after the Ready, Set, Go conference to meet with other important staff in the building to coordinate services. Teachers will learn valuable information about the child as an individual, building rapport to ease transition in the classroom. Teachers will have an opportunity to listen to the child read and have a conversation about their reading. This type of reading conference will allow teachers to know their students' needs at the beginning of the school year, and will allow them to personalize instruction much faster than if the teacher squeezed the reading conferences during the start of the school year. There are a few other important considerations to take in or keep in mind. Ready, Set, Go K5 supports our World's Best Workforce goal of having all of our students reading at or above grade level by third grade. Ready, Set, Go K5 supports the social-emotional component of our work with responsive classroom by starting the year with relationships already on track. Ready, Set, Go K5 supports goals in our strategic plan of personalizing learning and removing barriers to learning. As you know, literacy is a foundational skill that supports all learning, both current and future, and strong home-school relationships are foundational to a healthy and productive classroom. Extending the Ready, Set, Go conferences through grade five will help us start the school year off right with both of these needs in mind. When you review the calendar options tonight, I encourage you to consider all of the benefits that would result by extending the Ready, Set, Go conferences through grade five, and to consider approving calendar B. Thank you.
Karen, can you give your address?
I will. 2108 Cottage Grove Drive, Woodbury.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Next speaker is Sandy Hayner.
Hi there. Sandy Hayner, Lydia Circle, Stillwater, Minnesota. So eight weeks ago, I was up here sharing a bit about my conversation with Board Member Olafen and her passionate position regarding spending time with or speaking, therefore representing those that she considers to be un-Christian-like. I wondered about her divine perspective and how she, as a mere human, was able to select criteria with which to evaluate and judge the inherent value of the lives of those of us in the community. What about the people who disagree with her narrow and subjective criteria, or those who assign to another religion or none at all? I asked you, Chair Hapner, how this religious discrimination follows board policy. I asked if you support or condone this stereotyping behavior by your vice chair. And I also asked, which board policy supports her position of creating subjective hurdles against those who don't assign to her value system? In the last three meetings, you have responded to all the open forum questions but mine. I approached you, and you looked, looking for a response, and you acted like you had no idea what I was talking about, so I wrote them down for you, and you responded that you'd try to get around to it. So after the last meeting, again, still no response, as you were walking out the door, I asked you again why you hadn't responded. You dug around in your folder, and you presented me with a pre-folded handwritten letter, which is weird, because you were on your way out the door. And if you'd gone through the trouble to write it, why would you not just give it to me voluntarily? I assume you sensed my confusion because you offered up the justification of, well, I thought this made more sense because now it's out of context because it was so long ago. I offered to create context by revisiting this topic at this open forum. You didn't think it was necessary, but I disagree. So here I am, because I think other people are curious to hear your answers, too. I forgot the actual letter, but I took a picture, so we've got it. So the letter reads, "Sandy, any board member makes an individual decision about whom they want to meet with. No other board member, including the chair, can direct other board members on whom they have to meet with. So as far as I'm aware, there is no board policy that forces board members to meet with or not meet with any resident. That is the choice of the board member. Hope that answers your questions." So you have a board consultant who advises that you don't know how well you've communicated until you get feedback, so I'm offering feedback. Does not answer any of my questions. Now you know. Also, and I'm not really sure what passing notes nor dodging questions is really the best way to demonstrate transparency, I find it very concerning that you seemingly support policy discriminatory beliefs and labeling of those in the community who disagree with her as un-Christian-like and by default, not worthy of her representation. It's even more shocking to me personally that she holds this position and is simultaneously running for state office. On another note, I have a couple questions after reviewing several hundred pages of emails between board members. So here's a question. How are board members categorized as per the Data Practices Act? Are you classified as employees or elected officials? Where can I find this classification on your website or policies? Who is legally, who is the legally required responsible authority in regards to the Data Practices Act, which was established 40 years ago? Each district is mandated to have a responsible authority who is charged with handling data practices requests, and that person is supposed to be responsible for 25 different tasks under the DPA law. It's as simple as filling out a person's name on a blank line, approved with a board vote, and then submitted to the state. And I'm concerned that this hasn't happened, and it is the reason for this district's expensive and completely inefficient way data requests are handled. This should be handled better. And this person is supposed to be charged by the board. Can you point me to the district's records retention schedule as it pertains to the Minnesota Records Act? When was this submitted, and how long are the board members directed to keep emails that are deemed by law to be official record? And finally, where is the district's DPA redaction record housed? And given that your responsible authority is not clear to the public, who would I contact to see this? For those who are unaware, when redactions are made to data practice requests, the entity is obligated to keep a record of why that entry was redacted and the statute that allows this redaction. Given the 500-some pages I just read, I'm very interested in seeing this record. I hope to receive public answers to these questions and believe it will help to begin facilitate a spirit of transparency and accountability.
I would be willing to do that at the next meeting. If I could get a copy, ran through those questions fairly fast, I couldn't take them down. So if we could have that sheet with your questions, that would probably be helpful.
Okay. Thank you.
And Chair Hapner, may I just respond, since my name was... So I just wanted to let Mrs. Hayner and anyone else who's listening, just kind of repeat what I had said earlier, that I'm always willing to meet with anyone when that conversation is rooted in honesty, and kindness, and respect, and just a mutual value around finding solutions that move this district forward. I'm always happy, and I welcome that conversation when we can have those shared values. So, thank you.
So if you won't talk to me, how do you know if I exhibit those qualities?
We're done now.
Okay, so that's a question.
You had yours.
Yep.
Paula had hers. I'm going to get the sheet from you with the questions on. That's all we're taking tonight.
That's a question, too.
That's all we're taking tonight. Thank you. I noticed one of our honorees came in late tonight, so I'm going to ask her to come to the podium.
Sarah. I am so sorry. I misread Barb's email. I thought it said seven. And I got here at six thirty. I thought I'm so early. I'm so embarrassed.
We did read just a short description of the Distinguished Educator Award that you received, but we would love it if you speak to the board a little bit about your work and your journey with it.
Sure. Yeah, that was a complete surprise. But the award comes from an organization called the Minnesota GIS-LIS Consortium. And that is a group of professional GIS people, so computer mapping. And for the last, oh, maybe 15 years, I've been involved in learning about GIS and integrating it into my classes, and also teaching other teachers about GIS and how to bring that to their classrooms. So, yeah, it was a great honor, and I was able to go to Bemidji and attend their conference and a luncheon. And so, thank you for recognizing that.
Thank you.
Your work in the district is well-known, and that H2O for life was huge, and kids have been impacted by that, that, you know, long after they graduate because of your work with that. So we love having you in the district. Keep teaching hard.
Mr. Hapner, if I might. Sarah, I've said these things to you before, but I, you know, as a former teacher, particularly political science, economics, social studies, you've taken it to such a higher level. And you model so well how kids can live this. So it's very heartfelt, and it's a privilege to have you in our district. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Consent agenda this evening, we have the minutes of the October 26, 2017 special board meeting, minutes of the October 26, 2017 school board meeting, and minutes of October 27, 2017 special board meeting. We have the dispersment register, October 18 through November 2, 2017, and the Human Resources Personnel Report. Could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Okay, we've got a motion. Could I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye, raising your hand. Aye. Hoes. Thank you. Three reports this evening. The first is the 2018-2019 school year calendar. I'll call on Superintendent Pontrelli for that.
Thank you. This evening, we are bringing forward to you to consider two versions of a calendar. And Karen Lateral did such a wonderful job explaining calendar B, but I'll give you just a short synopsis of the two. Draft calendar A is very similar to what the board has seen in the past and to what we're living this year. The format is very much the same as far as student contact days, when students start, those type of things. The major difference is calendar draft B. And Karen shared with you a number of things that, from her perspective, support calendar draft B, and why it might be something that the board wants to consider. We had teachers, coordinators, and directors come and ask us, since they knew we were coming forward with a calendar, if we'd be considered, we would consider running Ready, Set, Go conferences for grades one through five. And for those of you who might not be familiar with this format, this is an opportunity for this past year, our kindergarten students to come in and have a conversation and get to know their teachers, spend a little bit of time getting to know the school and the community, and then also some basic assessment type of things so that a teacher can personalize the learning for their students. And it was very successful. It was created by our kindergarten teachers, and we got lots of positive feedback from our teachers and our parents on that type of conference. And so this is something that we piloted this year with kindergarten, and our teachers would like us to consider moving forward with. Bob McDowell met with a smaller group of elementary teachers that were unanimous in the support of this idea. And I think we haven't had a lot of conversation yet about how this would look, but it would be created by our teachers. So having that time for the social-emotional and connection time with parents and families would be very important in these. So if you look at calendar draft B, you'll notice that in August, the first day of school would be for our sixth and ninth grade transition students who are transitioning to the middle school or the high school. Then if you look at the 28th, which would be Tuesday, we would add the rest of the grade, so we'd have complete sixth through 12th. And then on the 29th, we would add our kindergarten through fifth-grade students, because the first two days, they would be participating in the Ready, Set, Go conferences with their families. So the only difference between the two is the starting days and whether we would put in the Ready, Set, Go conferences or not at the beginning of the year. Are there any questions?
Director Pearson.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions, while maybe concerns. The first, I just have a concern about how it might affect families who may have older children watching the younger kids those first couple days of school, since the older kids will be in school. So I don't know if there's a way that we could... I know in the past, we've surveyed families, if we could survey and see if that would impact a large number of families that would need care for those kids. And then the other feedback that, just, it's on both calendars, but just that I've been hearing from some families, is that there's a lot of days, broken weeks in the first part of the year, and then maybe when they need a little extra day off at the end of the year, there's not as much. But that's just some feedback I've heard from families that, especially this part of the year, it feels like mid-October, since they've had a five-day week. So I just wanted to bring up those.
Thank you.
Tom?
Yeah, I'm trying to rationalize, you know, it used to be have to start after Labor Day, and now we keep pushing that back. And I guess I would just like to see the rationale going forward, because I'm hearing from people who are, you know, concerned that they really don't see the benefit. And I do, but I think it's more of a communication, because I do hear a lot from people... I do hear a lot from people who are like, "I thought we were supposed to start after Labor Day, and now we keep starting in August, and I thought it was just because you were building new buildings, et cetera," but just from a communication standpoint, we probably need to explain better why this is a better calendar to start before Labor Day.
I can share two of the things that I know that I've heard from families, and I know Chris is taking some notes on the communication piece, but one is that our students have an extra week to be in school before some of their assessments, so it's the learning piece. The other is that many of our secondary students are already back for athletics and activities, and so they're gearing back up for school. Learning-wise, our students tend to, in June, be ready to get out by June 4th instead of June 10th, and are more ready to come back in August. So when we've been looking at this, it's really been trying to look at the learning piece for students that makes the best, but I appreciate you bringing that up. Thank you.
Director Pelletier.
I'd like to actually kind of back what Shelley said. I heard Director Pearson had commented about the, the number of days and incomplete weeks that we have at the beginning of the year. I, I don't know, it does seem like it kind of detracts from a consistent schedule, so it's just something that I, I've also heard quite a bit about. And then the question that I had, I, you know, we received a lot of positive, quite a bit of positive feedback about this. My only question, and maybe it's been covered, is the transportation component for some of these, for some of these kids. Is that an issue, is that, or not? Could that be an issue?
As far as the students coming in with their parents on those days?
Yes.
You know, we didn't hear, or I at least haven't, and I'm not sure, I would have to ask Bob McDowell and our principals, but it didn't seem like it was, as long as we had communicated it far enough in advance for families to be able to come in. What we did hear was that they really appreciated that one-on-one time with the teacher, to get to know the teacher without the whole open house kind of format.
Right, yep.
So those are the things we heard, but I'm, you know, I would have to say that I imagine it is a challenge. I would think for myself as a mom, if I had to do it, I'd have to plan ahead of time about how to make that happen. It seems that maybe the value of having that one-on-one time for families is more, has been important, so, you know, I'm sure there are folks who feel both ways.
Thank you.
Director Stivlin.
Okay, thank you. I'm excited about this proposal because what it says to me is that the Ready Set Go plan this year worked really, really well, and that's what I've heard around the community too, in talking with teachers and parents, that it was really, really wonderful to give our kindergarteners a little bit of a delayed start so that they could become more comfortable with the whole concept of school, and, and the parents could come in and get to know the teachers and the classrooms. And I really understand that, I think a lot of people do, and, and see the value in that. A couple of concerns I have about actually both of these plans is I just wonder if it's creating confusion for people to not, to have so many different starting days for different grades. I mean, in all three cases, I mean, other than kindergarten, you know, you've got just a whole bunch of different things happening, so I just wonder if there's a little bit of confusion that we would be causing for families. I absolutely support the idea of assessment right away at the beginning of the year, and of really being intentional about building the relationship between school and family with the parents, really building that, that sense of invitation to participate in the learning for kids. But I wonder if this isn't, I mean, is this the only way to achieve that? You know, is there another way to do it without having this additional confusion of the first day of school being like, "Well, wait, when is it?" I was talking to Director Pearson a couple of days ago when we were thinking about this, and, and I just thought, "Oh, my gosh, what if you had one child in each one, you'd have a different start day for each of your kids or something." I mean, I don't know about everyone else, but that would have been really confusing for me. I would have had a hard time with that.
Director Lockland.
And just to offer another divergent perspective, I've, I've heard from, from some that perhaps the relationship building needs to take root a little more before the assessment, and I don't know if that's something that's come up in conversations with the stakeholder group that you met with, but in particular, just some feedback that I had received was that would it be feasible to explore the possibility of administering and doing some kind of assessment around those MEA days? Are those specifically earmarked, though, for professional learning for our teachers already, in addition to, beside the MEA?
Right.
Okay.
That's what they are. You know, I think the, something that's a little bit different is the assessment, and Karen can speak to this even more specifically, but assessments have changed since all of us were in elementary school, and it was a group sitting down doing something. The FAST and PRESS and some of the assessments that we work with students to find out where they are so we can personalize the learning for them, take up to 20 minutes, would you say, Karen? Is that about ballpark, per student? So if I'm a teacher trying to give an assessment to a student for 20 minutes and give them my full attention, what happens with the rest of the kids is something that's a challenge if you're an elementary school teacher. And one of the things we heard from our teachers during our negotiations was, "How can we do this differently so that we can really focus on the child and then the other kids are safe in doing the work that they need to also?" So I think it's always that balance of, you know, do they need more time to build relationships? Well, I guess I would argue that I don't know that two weeks down the road would help. I think having that half hour with the teacher and family is really supportive and encouraging those relationships, and that's what we heard from our kindergarten families this year. So I would encourage board members to talk to some of the kindergarten families who experienced that this year, and see what their response would be. It's always that balance for you about, is it going to be inconvenient, or is it better for learning?
Okay, we'll vote on this at the November 16th meeting, so if you have questions, Director McDowell, I suppose, is the person-
Sure.
-that we could address our comments to. Next report is the combined polling locations. We have spoken about that one time previously. Barb sent us a number of documents related to that, and I'm just gonna ask Barb if you would kind of talk as much as you can about that yes vote or no vote sheet that you sent out. I think all board members got that, yeah.
Certainly. The statute from the 2017 session had changed a bit, and school districts can combine polling locations, and they would need to do that by the end of the year. That said, approving the polling locations for a general election, which would be that second Tuesday in November of 2018, and also approving combined polling locations in the event of a special election, if the board were to do that, does need to be done by December 31st. That said, a yes vote is simply setting up the how if an election were to occur. We do know that we will have board member elections next year for the general election on the ballot. So we're required to name our combined polling locations for the next year in the event of a special election. In working, as you know, with Washington County, they do run all of our elections. The polling locations, they basically, they send me the list. They say, "These are your combined polling locations." They're the same ones with the exception of one that we've used for the last 10 years. A no vote means if you were not to combine the polling locations but to use that full list in the event of a special election, it would be an additional cost to the board. A special election generally runs around ballpark $50,000. To pull the locations out of a combined location would be about $4,000 for each additional poll that you would want to open. For instance, we do have voters in Scandia. It is two, a husband and a wife. In the event of a special election, typically, we combine that location, and they would go to May Township to vote. Otherwise, we would need the Scandia Township to open their location and stay open all day, from 7 till 8 for the polls. So there is an additional expense if you are to not combine locations, but it is recommended to combine locations.
Thank you. Director Stivlin.
So the, one of my questions was, who determined what the combined locations would be, and why are there only, I think there's only five here? I mean, I was thinking, when I was looking at this, that if we were gonna have a special election, for our purposes, the people would be voting for something relating to the school district only, right? Is that-
Correct.
That's what we'd be talking about?
Yes.
Okay, so wouldn't we want even fewer locations? I mean, this doesn't seem like a radical of enough change for such a situation. Do you understand what I mean? To only have five? We, we go from one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, like 11 locations get put down to five, but all the rest stay the same. So it's really not that big of a savings. You know what I'm saying?
It is. Combining locations, the way I understand it with my conversation in the county, is it's, it's dual purpose. And legislation this year, the change was, for example, for some of the smaller districts and out-of-state districts, in the event of a special election, they would not generally use a county or municipal polling location, but just use their schools. And this is-
Yeah.
-helping voters with consistency to go to their combined locations.
We don't choose those spots.
We don't, we don't choose those spots. They are already, because you'll see them, they're, they're repeated on the general election side, so they're determined as polling locations.
So then are you saying these would be the same- combinations that we would use if Washington County was gonna have a special election of some sort, or some other entity? Is that what you're saying, there would be consistency?
It, it's consistent because these are the same combined locations that we have been using for the last 10 years.
Okay.
Director Potajek.
Yes, Barb, I can't see you very well, so I'm gonna look up here at the screen.
Okay.
So if you, if you talk that way. But I've got, I've got a couple of questions, but I, I think they're easy ones. And what you need the combined polling locations for is if you have a special election. But if you have a, a national election, say presidential, a gubernatorial election, those are called general elections. Is that accurate?
That is accurate. The board could hold a special election and choose to hold it on that second Tuesday in November, so then all of the polling locations would be open.
Okay. And, and it seems to me, and again, I'm just trying to get the context on this, that there are three possible special election purposes, and maybe there's more than that, but the way I look at it, there's, if you have to have a special election, say, to elect a board member, somebody dies, moves out of the area, or for whatever reason, you need to fill an open spot. Secondly, and this is no particular order, if you had a renewal for a levy, that would, could be a special election, or it could be in a general election, and the same thing would be true for bond facilities. Is, is that accurate?
That is accurate. I can think of one additional, and that would be a capital levy, which a lot of districts use or call technology levies.
Oh, okay, good. Yeah, I agree on that. Now, having said that, and I looked, and thank you for compiling all of these things, because there are a lot of pieces here that you've supplied us with, but it seemed to me, the context where this came up last year in the legislature, was the legislature was discussing the issue of whether to only allow special elections to be part of when general elections are held. Now, for whatever reasons, they decided not to make that exclusive.
Okay.
Now, but I think another part of this ingredient here, as I read the statute, and Tom, you help me out if I need it, and that is, you can do this every year. In other words, we, if we're gonna do this for the 2018, we've got to do it by December 31st. If for the following year, you haven't done it, you gotta do it again for the following year.
Correct.
And, and every time, it's the same cutoff, and that was kind of a way to, to match that. So is that accurate?
That is.
Okay.
We're, yep, we, it's an annual resolution that the board would have to pass in the event that they would hold a special election.
And, and to piggyback on Sarah's question, what they're required to do is if you're gonna have special elections, you've got to get this passed ahead of time. You have to. And people, and who determines where those are or how they're combined, is the local municipality, or the local township, or whatever?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, okay. So those are my questions. I, I'm just trying to make sure I understand, and I, and I think I do.
Director Pelletier.
Thank you. I just, I guess I just have, you know, a comment and a question. I, yes, it's a statute issue, and it does save us money, is that correct? If, if we, as opposed to if there's a special election and we have, have to use all of the designated locations, is that correct?
Right. It's approximately $4,000 more to use the individual out of the combined.
Okay. And, and, you know, I'm looking, because Lake Elmo's my wheelhouse, and back in the day, when I used to have an actual arm, I could pretty much throw a ball from the fire hall to city hall, so I guess I'm, my, you know, they're exceptionally close by, so I'm, I'm just, I guess I'm just curious, we have, can you just clarify again? I'm trying to see if this is a, more of an issue than, it doesn't seem to be a huge issue to me, to be honest, so I'm just trying to make sure that my opinion is sound. We have been using these polling locations for 10 years, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And I had a question.
Director Stivlin.
I'm so sorry. How often have we had a special election in the last, say, 30 years?
Oh, good grief. I would have to go back and take a look.
Does it happen? I mean, how unlikely is this?
Director Pearson.
I don't know the answer to that.
I think it's, it could happen. If we went to renew our levy, we could do that in a May. I think a May election would be one that you'd look at, so I think it could happen, and if we lost a board member, that's when else we'd need to do it.
So like when we passed the bond in May of 2015?
That was a special election.
That was a special election, yes. And so that, during that time, we use these polling places?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
Director Potajek.
So, so one of the issues, and that's the argument for having a combined polling locations, is in the interests of being frugal, saving money.
Correct.
But, but that's the same issue that was discussed in the legislature, that if you were going to have these, why not just do them during general elections? Whether they be gubernatorial elections, because our percent of cost goes way down because the state or whatever, or pays, picks up a lot more of the cost.
Absolutely.
Yeah. I think an example of that, though, maybe, is if you go out for a renewal in the fall, and, you know, several districts, if, if it doesn't go through and you decide you need it, you go out for an ask again in May. Otherwise, you'd have to wait till the next November, and that money is another year out, so I think it's just time, timelines.
And, and that's the point. I think for some, it's facilities, or flexibility is a better question. I think for some, they see this as a strategy, strategic.
Well, now I'm confused.
Director Pelletier.
I, what kind of strategy, I guess? I'm confused now.
Typically, more people turn out-
Director Potajek.
Thank you. More people turn out during a national election or a state election. election, or a state election, than you do for special elections.
We're voting on this next week, the 16th, so if you've got additional questions, I guess Barb's the person to get ahold of. Our third report is the 2018 Legislative Platform, and I'll turn that over to somebody on the Legislative Working Group to talk us through that.
I, I think I've been appointed to do that.
All right, Director Potajek.
And I would like to recognize my colleagues, Sarah Stetland and Paulo Rockland, and Denise also joined us in two of those meetings. And we met for about 45 minutes to an hour on each of those. But some things came out of those, and I think they were very productive. First of all, there is going to be a breakfast with board members, and with area legislators, and it's scheduled for 7:30 to 9:00 a.m. on November 20th, and it's at the Early Childhood Family Center. And last year, we had several, because it is a public meeting, we had several parents join us as well. Really, two purposes on that. One is, those are our go-to people, to try to get favorable legislation that's in the interest of our district and our students' past. So part of that is to get acquainted, to get them to know what we value, and what we think is significant. I think, as most board members, and perhaps a good portion of the public knows, this is a non-funding year. So you're not gonna get big changes in the formula, or some of those things. But nevertheless, sometimes smaller steps are taken, or sometimes you plant a seed for the following year. But what I think everyone has, and there's some on the table there, if you're interested and didn't get one, is you have a platform, and what we've put together is a draft here for the Board. We're not gonna be voting on that tonight, but we did wanna share it with the Board, and I wanna thank especially Carissa, because we talk conceptually of what we wanted. She's the person who puts it on paper, and makes it look as attractive as it does here. But if you will, I'd like you to walk me through this. Number one, again, this is a draft. And like any draft we bring to the Board, it's subject to Board review and approval or disapproval. Our top legislative priorities that we wanna share are basically two. There's a lot more we could add to the list, and some of those may come up at the breakfast. But our two in priority order, the first one is special education cross subsidy. And what we'd like to see here is an increase in the state's share of special education funding. And so what the rest of that paragraph does, is it talks about rationale. And we're gonna go to the flip side of this in a minute, and we'll talk about additional rationale. The second in order, but also very, very important, is pensions. And this is to provide funding to offset any increase that school districts must pay into the teacher retirement account. And a lot of times, they use TRA to symbolize that. And public employee retirement accounts, which is PERA. But again, I will talk more about rationale. The biggest rationale for this is the present pension fund is not keeping up. And two things have made this eminent, very, very important. It did last year, it does this year, and each year, it gets a little bit worse. One good news piece for people like George and myself, is the number of retirees has increased, and they're living longer. And so what you have to do is, you have to pay out more because of that. The second part of that is that the present pension fund is not as rewarding financially when they invest their money. It's not as positive the turnover. And so, the two things that they're looking at here, well, possibly three things, is one, to lower the retirement benefits, which is, again, politically, there's a lot of questions on that. Another is to raise the amount that's paid into the retirement fund. And that could come from one of two sources, or both. And that could be some of those employees who are still in the workforce, or it could come from the school districts paying more into the account. So when they talk about pensions, and they talk about providing funding to offset increases that school districts must pay, that's what they're talking about. So if you would, if you flip it over here, on the second side, and we will share this, depending on what comes out of the Board's decision, is we talk a little bit more of who we are, we talk a little bit more about some of our success stories. But again, there is additional rationale for special education. And, and the big thing that one has to realize about special education, it goes to students who have individualized education plans. And they're 14% of our district's total enrollment. Now, originally, that comes out of legislation in the 1960s, which is oftentimes referred to as IDEA. The problem here, or the challenge here, is this is not money that just goes to special education students. Because special education students are guaranteed by law, it's a mandate, that their needs need to be addressed, and that's a good thing. The problem is, is that the state, but especially the federal government, haven't kept up to what they promised us in the 60s. If you look at the chart below, it shows you how the district spends a dollar. And you can see that a very significant part of that dollar, .16 cents, basically goes to special education. Where we get the money from, for special education, is that slice of pie. And you can see there that 45%, 46% of that is unfunded from other sources. That means it has to be gotten through local property taxes and other local sources. 49% of that is funded by the state.
It is, Mike. The title should be reversed, though. The gen ed is the black, just heads up as you...
Okay.
Okay.
We just noted that to make the change, but...
Yep, thank you. Would you go through that one more time, Kristin?
Absolutely. So the taupe, or gray, is, is the, the special education funding, the state spent funding, and the black is the gen ed funding, not the way it's indicated on the sheet right here.
Okay, so presently, it's in error?
Correct.
Okay.
The numbers are there, it's just the reverse.
Yeah. And that small sliver there?
Is gen ed.
Yes. The very, very small sliver in the special ed funding is a federal. That's what I'm looking at now. No?
No, that's what the special ed students generate in general education aid.
Okay, okay. But the bottom line is, what we're asking for here is what is called cross subsidy funding. And this is a part that's not supplied, or not funded, by either the state or the federal government. The state has done a much better job of keeping up than the federal government, but this is a philosophical issue as well. So this is what we're trying to convey. On the left is the pension story, and that talks about teachers, and staff are the very heart of it. But a 1% increase in the T E, TRA, if that happened, would equal $419,000. And a 1% increase in the PERA, which was described on the previous page, is $137,000. So what we're asking for is for our area legislators to look closely at both those items, and cross subsidies, and also pensions. So now that I've slotted that a little bit, I'll ask either of my colleagues or superintendent if you want to add to that at all.
No, actually, I just wanna get another, a little bit more follow-up to, is there a portion of the special ed funding that comes from the federal government? It should be listed here?
There is. It is not listed there, because it's, federal funding is, we can't supplant, meaning we can't transfer expenses. That funding exists, and we, we add services based on that, so technically, if those services go away, it's a one-for-one. If the federal funding goes away, then those services go away. We, there's no support, if you will. So if we receive a million dollars in federal funding, we can't transfer expenses, because that's called supplanting. We must have additional services that are provided, that cover the million dollars. So that's why it's not represented as far as, because essentially, just looking at it, it's dollar-for-dollar. You could say it's underfunded, and what the feds give the state is underfunded, but the direct flow-through from the feds to us is, we're capped like title. If, you know, if you only get so much, you technically only spend that much. So ultimately, it ends up coming through the state as far as the cross subsidy, because we're going to spend it regardless. But to put it in its own category would be a misnomer, because technically, it's dollar for dollar. And that's very confusing, I can tell by the look on your face.
Yeah, sorry. I'm sorry, I'm confused. Is it coming through the state, then? Is that, are those federal funds coming through the state, then?
Some federal funds run through the state, which ultimately supports us.
Okay.
Some come directly from the federal government to us. The money that comes directly from the federal government to us, we can only spend up to. We can't overspend it. If we're overspending it, it's coming out of our general fund anyway, which is the cross subsidy, it's reflected in there.
Right, okay. So it would just be too confusing, really, to have it included in this diagram.
It would.
Which, by the way, the diagram looks amazing. Thank you, Carissa.
Thanks. She kept trying to explain all that to me, too. This is the simple version.
But, but I'm glad you brought that up, because when we meet with legislators, we're gonna have to know this better.
Mm-hmm.
And myself included, we're gonna have to explain it. Because if we're confused, and we're supposed to be in the know, it's, it's not gonna help our cause. So thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
On the very bottom, what it also talks about, particularly in the lower right, is on both these topics, because they are complex, we have additional handouts and information. And whether it's any interested citizen, if you want more information, we can supply that. And I'm, I'm trying to think, where's the best place to get that? Would they contact Carissa, or Kristin, or both? And I'm thinking of, like, this one that we've used for special ed.
I think it would be, if people have questions, they can send them to me, and then I can, depending on what it is, if it's a communication piece, or a finance, or a special education piece, then I can send it to the right director.
Okay, thank you.
I did have one more thing. I just wanted to say, just to clarify, and I think you mentioned this, too, Mike, this isn't a budget year for education, because they do that every other year, and they just put the big omnibus bill together last year. But this coming year will be an election year for a lot of our legislators. And so the reason why this is kind of important to keep it really focused, and, and, at least in my opinion, why, why it's good to keep it focused and simple, is because it, this is something very specific that they could then say, if they vote for this, and they approve additional funds for the retirement plans, or for special ed, that would be a campaign thing that they could say, you know, I supported education, I support our teachers.
Yep.
So hopefully, we get that support.
Okay, we'll be voting on this next week, so if you've got comments, refer them to any of the Legislative Working Group folks. We have no action items this evening, so we'll move to board member reports. The board chair report, I just have two quick things. One, I think Director Pearson mentioned earlier, the Pony Activity Center, a lot of folks using that, and I think we passed over, what, 450 memberships up there? If you haven't been up there, it'd be a great spot for you to see, and people are walking and using the equipment, and it's really going well, pretty easy registration, so that wasn't a problem. I hope the community takes, takes advantage of it. Secondly, I just wanna commend Carissa on the Community Connections newsletter for fall of 2017. And as I look through, particularly, I think, I believe it's page five, where you talked about supporting students, the enrollment fax, the balancing elementary class sizes. I think there's a lot of good information to kind of clarify some of the misinformation that might be out there. So I found this a very beneficial, upbeat handout, and one of my neighbors came over and said, you know, that might be the best thing I've ever gotten from the district. So I don't know how long she's been getting stuff from the district, but this apparently was the best. She's not a young lady.
Hope she's watching.
And board, other board member reports, where do we wanna start?
I, I'll go first. I don't really have anything to report, but Annamal did have a question for you.
Yeah, I had a question about the enrollment of the PAC. Was that strictly community members, or was that including students as well?
It's membership, so it could be families. It's the number of memberships so far.
Like, including student memberships?
Right, so...
Is there a breakdown of what number of students got those memberships?
You know, I'm not sure, because I know, like, if a family, if I signed up my family, and I had students, it would be under one membership. But we can maybe find that out, I could ask Annette Salman.
That'd be good.
Okay, Director Stivland, you wanna start?
I don't have anything.
Okay, Director Pelletier.
I do. I would like to use my board report tonight, just to say a few words about social media. Some of this was spurred from some comments at last week's forum, but to be honest, the bigger reason for my thoughts tonight has to do with some recent conversations I had with some parents involved in our mental health work that came out of the meeting on Monday night. These parents have shared some pretty painful experiences with me of the damaging effects social media has on our children. They have been, I'm sorry. There have been pictures that have been sent around the social media landscape in the past weeks and months about some of our students and members of the community. And frankly, the overall health of the nation is viewed from the lens of social media, with our leaders attacking each other incessantly on a regular basis. All of this is unacceptable to me. It is a threat to our sense of community, and to our humanity. While it's a wonderful place to keep in touch with loved ones, brag about kids, talk about dogs and whatnot, spread information, the dark side of social media cannot and must not be ignored. They say a picture says a thousand words. I agree with this, but does it say the right words? Does it really tell the entire story? We, as parents, try to guide our children with advice, like, how would the recipient of that comment feel if you said that to their face? How would they feel if they knew you posted that picture? Just because you can, doesn't mean you should. I feel so very badly for our children today. Nothing they do is sacred. Everything is under a microscope. They are completely unable to make mistakes. All things they do and say as part of their growing up is open for false interpretation, commentary, and worst of all, ridicule. As a gentleman involved in our mental health works told me one day, kids can't go home to escape anymore, like, like we used to when we were kids and had a bad day at school. Social media is everywhere, 24 hours a day. It's just not fair. I believe that there is one bully in this room. It fractures relationships if we allow it, and I have seen it happen many times. It taunts us to impulsively hit send before thinking about the feelings of the recipient. It creates a mob mentality with the victim being unable to defend him or herself. I'll go so far as to say that it's an assault on our very intellect. I have seen too many good people be hurt by social media. Too many children go into depression over things said about them. You can't take back your words. So where do we go from here? That's up to each and every one of us to decide. I want us all, in this absolutely wonderful powerhouse district of ours, to stand up and say enough is enough. This is our community, this is our home, and the bully that is social media is not allowed. As one of my all-time favorite artists, and I apologize, this is gonna age me, Michael Jackson says, "If you wanna make a change, be the..." Jackson says, "If you want to make a change, be the change." Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Director Lehman.
Nothing.
Director Pearson.
Nothing.
Director Potachik.
Each and every one of you have a copy of the talking points from 916, which is Northeast Metro Intermediate School District. And most of those, I think you can kind of scan those and have an idea of what went on at our November 2nd, which was Wednesday of this week. One story, though, I want to talk about very, very briefly, is that District 916 was in need of a visual impaired teacher. In other words, somebody who's going to work with those that are blind. And that is a very tough need to fulfill. And what they found is, they found a very qualified, a very, very good teacher. The challenge was, she came from the Philippines. And what they spent a lot of time, a couple of directors there did, and, and the teacher was there as well, talking about the challenges of coming in as an immigrant, getting through all of the barriers you had to, despite the fact that 14 districts were very challenged to have somebody who was well-trained, well-qualified, and certified to fulfill that. So sometimes, 916 is on the airwaves. So if you get a chance, you might want to go and listen to what was a very, very impressive story. And then the last thing I want to mention there, there's some others I could spend time, in the interest of time, I won't, is that there are site visits coming up for school board members and for district administrators, and they're being invited to visit programs that are in the same or similar geographic regions of the, of the district. And the next visit will be to South Campus and Bel Air Education Center, and that's on November 29th. And so if you're interested, they've got a contact person there. And if there's somebody else interested, particularly in the public, that would like to visit a program, please contact me or visit that website as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Working group reports. Director Pelletier.
Just a minor one, the Dream Team is alive and well. We, we worked today just on, basically, we discussed a policy review cycle to make sure that everyone knows exactly the various process that, or the process that we're going to take. And I, I'm assuming we're going to send this out to the entire board, so everyone knows that. We just had a big, kind of a 10,000-foot discussion. The reason that we kind of held back on the 200s is because they're a little complicated. So we wanted to make sure that we're doing the right thing with regards to process. And then next meeting, at our 3:30 standing meeting, we will be delving into the 200s.
Personnel working group met this morning, talked about the superintendent contract, and we'll continue to work on that. Denise and I are meeting tomorrow to talk about that. Any other working group? Yep.
Well, we get a, I don't know if, Director Lehman, you want to talk about, just that the Budget Committee met and started, so the rest of the board knows that we, that that started.
Yeah, go ahead. Because I, that's, that's a different committee than the Board Finance, but yeah, we.
Do we, I mean, maybe something people want to know that it's just started, that budget assumptions have started. And I can't remember next steps, if that comes to the board. I don't know. But I just, I was chatting with somebody today, and they said they wanted to know that, so just to give clarity around that.
Next steps is, I will take the assumptions that we have, have consensus on. We'll create a three-year projection model, of which that projection model will then be presented, presented to the board to provide a potential financial picture for our district in the next three years.
Okay. And then at what point does the board weigh in on any different assumptions that they want to add?
Well, the, the assumptions, for the three-year, we usually leave it at that, because all groups are represented. It certainly would change as we're moving, or can be adjusted as we move into the preliminary budget cycle for next year.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And just for the public, the assumptions we look at are, what do we think our tuition is, or the number of students who are going to be attending our district are? We look at kindergartners, we look at elementary age, we also look at insurance costs for district employees, trying to figure out those kind of things going forward. It just helps us in budgeting to have these assumptions. And the group consists of both board administrators, teachers who are in the union, and also principals as well. So it's a, it's a very robust group that we all sit around and try to guess as best as we can, so that we have somewhat of a projection to look at.
Thank you.
Just a reminder to board members, we do have a quick turnaround. We have a meeting a week from today, and we will act on the three reports that we got tonight, the school calendar, the combined polling places, and the legislative platform. So if you've got questions, reach out about that. Could I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We'll take them both. We're adjourned.